Good evening, everyone. We will start with the Community Development Act. Emergency meeting. I'll call that meeting to order. Chrissy, will you take your call, please? John?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Jake?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
We have a forum. Okay, I have proof of publication in front of me. Visitor's correspondence. Anyone who's ordering to speak on any item or issue not on the agenda or on any item on the agenda that does not include a public hearing may do so but shall be limited to three minutes. Persons should identify themselves by name and address. Person speaking should not expect council to engage in back and forth dialogue regarding their comments unless an agenda item includes a public hearing. No person may speak during the business portion of the meeting, provided however persons speaking during the public hearing are limited between five and 20 minutes. The public is advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of council chambers and one copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying. So keep in mind, this is the Community Development Agency meeting. Is there any public that would like to speak as part of this meeting? Go ahead and come up to the podium, state your name and address for your record.
Hi, my name's Deb Smith and my address is 204 South Park Ave. I'm here today because of the newly constructed Concrete Street, Park Ave. Prior to this street renovation, our property, the park to the north of us and the Park Ave street were all same ground level. After the concrete was laid, nothing is level anymore in front of our street. In fact, after the street was laid, part of our property and drive had to be raised significantly just to compensate for the newly elevated street in front of our house. As a result, our property sits lower than the street. This is a problem. This construction has caused unnatural diversion resulting in the natural flow of surface water. To complicate matters even worse, there were cement culverts added that were never present before. Specifically, one culvert was added to my side of the property and directly across my street, which diverts to the museum. However, with the increased street elevation and the slope of the concrete on that street, water only drains towards my property into our culvert. So during the hard rain, that culvert, looks like a moving river, diverting street water onto our property. And so that rain sits there on my yard and on my drive. Needless to say, there were no sewer drains added anywhere. Now, I did some research in Nebraska State laws on city street water diversion onto homeowners' properties are specific. Discharging surface water onto adjacent private land that is contrary to the area's natural drainage is prohibited. In On Valley, we seem to have a water problem. It seems to be an enemy at sometimes. But damaging my property with water diversion is not a solution. So I need to understand what the city's intentions are going forward for an immediate resolve. And today, I sit here and I see that possibly that is on your agenda today and I hope it is. Thank you.
It turns on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, any other public comments for the Community Development Act? This one?
I'll go.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
There's some votes.
Sorry, sorry. You're fine.
Tatum West, 117 West Second Street. I'm speaking today regarding a coffee shop that's being planned to be built across the street from me at 124 West Second Street. I love support small businesses, but this location just raises some safety concerns for me. Based on data on an anonymous community page survey, it seems like this is a business that would bring a lot of traction to the area, which a lot of traffic brings a lot of risks that could be involved. So I have a five-year-old daughter and my greatest concern is safety. So we have a sidewalk and if there's parking along that street, which is already a little bit congested as it is, I'm concerned about the visibility with drivers and I'm afraid that accidents are more prone to happen just since if there's cars and people are walking on that sidewalk, that somebody might not be seen. Another significant concern is emergency access on the road. It's a pretty small two-lane road as it is and if cars are parked along both sides, I don't know if an emergency vehicle, if needed, can get across safely. Lastly, my neighbors and I rely on that street parking. It is limited and I do have alley parking, but as of right now, that is not a live really safe option for me. And parking on the street is the safest place for me to park. It is already pretty congested up there. So I'm just asking that the city look into the ordinances with making sure that there is appropriate parking at that business when it does open. Thank you.
All right, anyone else for the CDA meeting? All right, do they entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Vote, please. All in favor? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So. Sir.
Vote, please. All in favor? Who would entertain a motion to adjourn as the CDA?
So. Sir.
Thank you. All right. Good call, everybody, guys. All right, now we will call the regular meeting to order. John?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Jake?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
We have a forum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Consider our religious stand as one nation under God and that is all. The Constitution and its parts.
I have proof of publication in front of me. Visitor's correspondence. Anyone who's ordering to speak on any item or issue not on the agenda or on any item on the agenda that does not include a public hearing may do so but shall be limited to three minutes. Persons should identify themselves by name and address. Person speaking should not expect the council to engage in back and forth dialogue regarding their comments unless an agenda item includes a public hearing. No person may speak during the business portion of the meeting, provided however persons speaking during a public hearing are limited between five and 20 minutes. The public is advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of council chambers. One copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying. All right, anyone left to speak at this meeting?
I would.
Jane?
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Ryan Grado and I'm president and CEO of a company called Red Dog Building Group and we're doing development work in the Elkhorn and Waterloo area and would like to do development work in the Valley area. We currently have... Yep. We currently own some lots in the Valley area. I live at 5513 North 284 Circle Valley, Nebraska. So I'm here to talk about a potential change to the design overlay district. Greg Perry gave a summary of it at the last council meeting and then Kyle spoke on behalf of it as well. This potential change was unanimously voted on by Planning Department and Kyle's remarks on it. Again, Greg Perry gave a summary of it, but Kyle's remarks on it were that, in his opinion, it gave a balance between great design standards and economic development. So what he's talking about there is, right now, the current design standards are cost prohibitive. They include, they include standards that, like for example, so a certain percentage of glass, a certain percentage of brick and block and durable materials and they're such that any new construction would be completely cost prohibitive unless we're talking about like a strip mall or some high-end retail. And so what happens is, as a result of this, is we lose businesses to other communities like Waterloo where we're currently developing. We lose job creation. We lose access to affordable services. Evidence of this, just a really sort of relevant thing is there's the pharmacy building sold to somebody that is going to put a batting cage in there. So if we don't have the right development in the right places, what happens is we get the wrong development in the wrong places and we lose Main Street and to businesses that don't... I'm not trying to call them out, but we just, yeah, we put the wrong businesses in the wrong places because we don't have affordable places for them to be. So, full disclosure, John Batch is my business partner and I want to make sure that in this, in this current climate where we have, you know, in this current political climate that we, that this is voted on without prejudice there. So, yeah, I wanted to bring that up. Thank you for hearing me.
Brett, did you ask something?
Brent Tison, 400 South Park Avenue. I've spoke to every single person on this council regarding the issue on Park Street. The last I was told is that we were going to cut a drainage ditch through my property and just being normal and not overthinking this, if you have to cut a ditch into my property, that basically tells me that the road was lowered to basically get the water to leave. I don't know how much rain we actually got today, but it was very minimal. More of a, just a sprinkle, if anybody could tell me how you don't know. But there's standing water now in front of my property, literally, and it has nowhere to go. And the part that bugs me the most is, is you, Mayor, that you have not responded to one single email, not a nothing. I have a generic email back from you that basically states that you have nobody in office and I need to contact somebody up here. You're the voice. You're the person that's supposed to help us. You're the one that can make those kind of decisions or help me along the way and you haven't helped at all. John has helped me, Jake has helped me, Melanie's helped me, Linda's helped me. You have not helped once. Not a response, nothing. It's very upsetting on my end, especially as a taxpayer. I feel like you should try to help us on this situation. I get the street needed to be paved, it is what it is. But now here's the problem. The water is not diverted to my property. It's diverted to Courtney Lawson's property and it has nowhere to go. We were told that that's the natural flow of drainage, but in 2019, the flood came through my backyard, four foot of water. It went to the southeast. It didn't go back to the city park, not a chance. And before this was all monolithically poured at 1,200 feet or whatever the footage is with no curbs, the water went to everybody else's property with no problem. And now all of a sudden, everything is diverted down to my park at 400 South Park. That road could have stayed at the same height. Now, I get that there's some elevations that have to change. I understand that. But something has to be done. Like, we're just sitting here and we're so close to winter. When the ground is frozen, the water can't go anywhere. So now I'm gonna have an ice property? Like, what am I supposed to do with that? I mean, are you guys liable if somebody slips and falls on that because there's a frozen puddle or am I liable at this point in time? Because now it's on my approach. Then I'm getting sued by some randoms that's walking by because there's a giant icicle in front of my house that I cannot get rid of because it has nowhere to go? Something's gotta be done. I see it's on the agenda, but it's gotta be sooner than when July was finished and early August? I mean, I met with Greg early August and we were supposed to have a result. I've never heard nothing from him other than when John called him. That's the only answers I've had. And even then, he's never reached back out to me. I'm just supposed to sit here and idle and forget about this and just let it happen? I don't understand what I'm supposed to do. So if you guys could make something happen, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to it? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of items 15 and 16 as the developer has requested the chief of chores here.
Sir.
Vote, please. All in favor? I think I'm going to approve the consent agenda. I think a motion to approve it.
Second.
Vote, please. All in favor? All right, number eight is the personal rapid debate consideration and approval. A person asked to the official depository. If this is an annual action, it needs statutory time. So we entertain a motion to approve that.
So. Second.
Vote, please. All in favor? All right, number nine, City of Valley Leasing Corporation, a payment of a director. This was tabled at the September meeting and we have learned since the last meeting that Cameron has not resigned from the corporation. The bylaws are not tied to his employment, so he is still listed as a director.
Nothing's changed today. Well, I'm not that anybody else on that discussion, but... I can make the motion. I don't know if anybody has anything else to discuss. What are the regulations for the agenda meeting? If not, I have a motion.
Go ahead, Jake.
So pursuant to the provisions of the Article 6 of the bylaws of City of Valley Leasing Corporation, I move that the city send a letter to Cameron Gales requesting him to resign as director of the corporation.
Second. Vote, please. Three in favor, one against. All right, number 10, Resolution Number 2025-40. Consideration in action to move the November 2025 city council meeting to Wednesday, November 12, 2025 because of the observed Veterans Day holiday.
So.
Second. Vote, please. All in favor? All right, number 11, Resolution 2025-41. Operation Green Light for Veterans. Consideration and approval of supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans.
So.
Second. Vote, please. All in favor? All right, for item 12, I will turn the meeting over to Council President John Batch.
Okay, I'm with Valley Days Foundation. Consideration and approval of street closure request for Valley Christmas tree lighting and holiday marketing. Do you want to add this?
Yeah, we're just requesting that Spruce Street... Oh, sorry.
State your name and address.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Bailey Huesman, 825 South 262nd Street in Waterloo. The Valley Days Foundation is just requesting that streets be closed. Spruce Street from Second Street to Gardner Street from 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Saturday, November 29th and Second Street from Spruce Street to the post office from noon Saturday, November 29th to noon Monday, December 1st. This will be for our tree lighting and the lighted parade that we are hosting on November 29th.
Sounds great. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Vote, please.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, number 13 is ordinance number 841. Commercial design standards in commercial areas. This is consideration and approval to amend existing section of Valley, City of Valley zoning regulations regulated relating to commercial design standards in designated commercial areas. This was tabled at the September meeting. Do you guys want a refresher of what this is or the changes of this?
I went back to the planning commission meetings and watched the last three meetings that this was discussed. Rune was not overly thrilled. Yes, he agreed at the end, but it was, I would have to say by watching it, it was more of a reluctance agreement. I would like to say that we tabled this until we have a buildings inspector in place with their opinion about it. So I'm making that motion.
I second that.
Vote, please.
John, you probably shouldn't have really voted on that.
Well, since it's being tabled, I feel like I can. He's pushing it to a person that I think we hopefully can mutually respect.
All right, number 14. Commercial and industrial zoning use limitations. Consideration and approval to amend existing sections of City Valley zoning regulations relating to commercial and industrial zoning. Andrea, do you want to review this one?
Andrea, represent the attorney's office. So this ordinance goes back into our zoning code, our use limitations in various industrial and commercial zoning classifications. Our existing zoning classifications have a use limitation that says a portion of the side or rear yard of... And then it talks about motor vehicle, boat, trailer rental and sales lots may be drained and surfaced with crushed rock. And there was discussion and it's been planned a couple times and this is what kind of came out of that, was we wanted to add the ability to use that crushed rock on construction of our yards. And that still only applies in the side and rear yards and all remain subject to all the impervious coverage requirements elsewhere in our zoning code. But that's all this does is add that to our existing use limitations in those commercial and industrial zoning classifications. So that's what this does. Just extends it to construction of our yards, essentially.
Do they have any questions for Andrea? I will open the public hearing for that. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak about this? Okay. Close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion or questions amongst the council? Okay. I would entertain a motion then to introduce ordinance 842 on the first reading.
So. Second.
Okay, you have a motion. And a second, Chrissy, will you read the short title, please?
Ordinance Number 842. An ordinance to amend existing sections of the City of Valley zoning regulations relating to use limitations within commercial and industrial zoning districts, providing for an effective date of dissonance ordinance, providing for a severability clause and providing for the repeal of all ordinances and conflicts therewith.
Thank you. Vote, please.
So this is, there's an option for a secondary ordinance?
Yes, this is the first reading.
Okay.
Vote, please. All in favor? Is there a desire to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance on the second and third readings?
So. Second.
Vote, please. Three in favor, one against. All right, ordinance 842 is passed on the third reading. Okay, number 15 and 16, ordinance for the agenda. 17, people service.
I'd like to hear people service reason here under 207 East Congress Street, 18 Winter Street. Water plant ran fine last month. I had a few hiccups in the plumbing, but we got them fixed. I think exciting there. Wastewater, on the other hand, was busy last month. We had several lift stations malfunction for several different reasons. I do ask that the public please refrain from flushing things that are not bound or ready to pull down your toilet and plug up the pumps, which may cause a hole. And there were several odd items pulled out of a couple of lift stations that should not have been flushed. So just pay attention to what you or your family is flushing down the toilet. This just causes problems for everybody. I do want to bring attention to how much water we used compared to last year to this year and that also helps us reduce our discarded water complaints because we're not moving so much water. This time last year, we used 42 million. This year, we use 29 million. So that's a major reduction. That's a major flow that lessens, so we don't disturb the mains that much so we don't have that many discarded water complaints. And that definitely helps until we can get things moving forward on the improvements on that. So thank you, everybody, for reducing your water usage because it actually does help everybody in general, but also lower our sewer too, because we went from 19 million to 11 million, which we all know we paid to a Fremont. So that makes a big difference for the bill of the Fremont. Water meters still continue, above 90%. Yeah, the antenna is installed and being programmed, as I understand it. We're still working on getting all the programming done for that, so that should be done soon. And any questions? None? Okay. Questions?
Is this the first time you've been above 90%?
No, it's been a couple of months, but we're just inching along and inching along because when you get to 10%, that is a continuous wires getting broke or whatever, right? So it's a constant battle for that 10%. But it's a major difference from, you know, 80% six, seven months ago. So it doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a lot. Thank you.
And that really goes to a combination of Andrea, the utility department, and the service.
Phenomenal team. Unbelievable team. She's been here one year and it's been the best year, so. Love her.
All right, thank you. City engineer, Greg.
Good evening. First time on the agenda is the water treatment plant. Tonight, we have Erickson's progress payment for number nine. That's an amount of $526,500. Basically, as a kind of brief overview, all of the foundation walls have been poured and also pretty much all of the underground piping now is actually in place except one little piece that they're still working on as of this week. They got the first set of the roof, if you will, over the detention tank, set, right, 10 days ago now. So that is moving along and then block work is actually scheduled to start pretty much here any day, any week. So that's good enough. So a lot of that will occur prior to any winter sort of conditions of weather and conditions that start to affect that construction more so. So still pretty much on track to get this online by late spring or really summer next year. That's kind of been the goal since the project has been. They have got one piece of equipment from the... Or notice of the one filter piece of equipment from the supplier that is delayed right now. They're anticipating that to show up in December. That's going to show up in January right now. So we're working through that with them and see what that will be for the overall schedule of the project, so. But with that, we do recommend approval to Erickson in that pay request amount.
I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-42. Actually, we approve contractor's application for payment number nine in the amount of $526,500. Second. Vote, please. All in favor?
Item B is this utility portion of Valley land. It's the sewer water and storm sewer improvement with United Utilities and Excavation. Again, they've actually completed the sanitary sewer installation. They've created about actually 50% of the water main installed within the project itself. So they're actually working on that. They're actually going to be working frantically over the next week to try to get out of the way of the payers. They're ready to come in and get the streets laid on that project. And so we're working with according to that. But tonight, we just have progress payment number five to United Utilities and Excavation in about $295,263. Having reviewed that, we would recommend approval in that amount.
I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-43. Actually, we approve contractor's application for payment number five in the amount of $295,263.
So.
Second. Vote, please. All in favor?
Item C is the contractor's application for payment number four progress payment to 2GT Construction LLC in $114,105.9. That's for the, basically, all of the work that was done here on Platte Street in the month of September. So having reviewed that, we do recommend approval in that set amount.
I'd create a motion to approve Resolution 2025-44. Actually, we approve contractor's application for payment number four in the amount of $114,105.9.
Did they get that work done in our 2025 fiscal year or not?
Yeah, we have got about 4% of the contract remaining. That will be carried over to that. Somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 of remaining work that will be pulled out. I believe, and maybe Christie can correct me if I'm wrong, this is still coming out of the same street fund bond. So it's a little bit of a point on the fiscal year between 2025 and 2026. I'm sure I've read the years.
I have a motion.
Second? Second. Vote, please. All in favor?
The item two, part of that same project, and this is the Park Street avenue drainage thing. Again, we have had two of these residents also talk here at the beginning of the meeting about a couple of those items. We've sent out correspondence to you. I haven't heard back from anybody, so we can work through that. I've talked to John on the follow-ons. So we can kind of work through this and figure out what we can do for the homeowners. Basically, there's a couple of things was cited with drainage law, whatever. Drainage law allows you to discharge the historic locations, which is what the plans did. And then to the point of, did we change the street grade? Sure, we did. But did we change it drastically? You know, like in front of Mr. Tison's house, it's about an inch and a half lower. So that's what it is. It's got our plans were an inch lower and the contractor was actually just a little bit under that tolerance. Um, and then, uh, Ms. Smith to the north, she's talking about hers. Um, but, you know, same situation. That, actually, I don't think we changed the street grade as much, so I don't have the plans all in front of me, but we can go through that, so. I'm willing to work or talk or meet with whoever they want to.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
On the, on the street steps, so we have to walk through that, so.
When did you send that email? Cause I was looking through and I could not locate it.
Uh, yes.
August twentieth, the first time, and then I resent it after the last customer.
Yeah, it's basically like, Miss Christie, be the clearinghouse to get it to the right, you know, addresses and everything, so.
Remember, was you the first one?
I don't know.
It's not my question.
So that's kind of the discussion on that, because if you have any more questions, I'd have any, if anybody, homeowners, council people, whoever, you go through and work through it, so.
I'm Beetham. This is another thing, rapid, rapid, but they are rapid flushing beacon, uh, basically last, uh, um, you know, it was Thursday, the tenth, a week, a little over a week ago. Uh, we received this, this is the flashing beacon that will go on Condon Street right near the fire station. This is part of the Valley Landing project with the TIF agreement. I think this was, well, I can't even think of when the TIF agreement, subject to the timeline was, but this is a portion of that that was agreed to, um, uh, Mr. U protection in the audience was one of his, uh, topics here, so. This will be a flashing beacon at Condon Street.
Flashing light.
What's that?
That was not for a flashing light. A road to go across the street.
Yeah. The one on the bridge, that's right. So, uh, it was included in the TIF agreement was a flashing beacon to provide a crosswalk for anybody using the trail, potentially from the school facilities behind the fire station along Condon and to Valley Landing, or through Valley Landing to the D C West Com- Complex, so. We did, we did, uh, receive bids for that. That was basically Omaha Electric Services in the amount of fourteen thousand, uh, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So at the time, our estimate was twenty-five thousand, so we did receive really good bids on that. Um, basically, this material's almost all on hand, so it's about an eight, six to eight week lead time, but the basis in there, I think we have to wait for the solar panel that will power this, uh, and then I will be able to put this on twice. Part of this is, we don't want this to be installed ahead of the street pegging, so we're putting it in right after, but that will be done, so. Um, with that, we do recommend award of the construction contract to Omaha Electric Services in their bid amount.
And this is one, I know you said part of the TIF agreement that access is paying off as part of the street project. This is not a city expense. We did a contract, correct?
Yeah, I think we actually included a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Don't quote that exact number, but for the portion of the trail on Condon to come from where the fire station stopped over to Two Hundred and Seventieth or Center Street, and then also this flashing beacon, so that's the two parts of that amount, so.
I'd entertain a motion to award the contract of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon to Omaha Electric Services Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Second.
Second. Vote please. All in favor?
Uh, one other project for the F Y twenty-six, one of the replacements. This is, uh, I'll go through the TIF plan, so, uh, him and I have been working on this over the last month, uh, since, uh, this was, I guess, really being talked about in the budgets, like, well, the big water main to replace some water mains. So in your packet, I'll hope you had a chance to see them out, but we had identified, um, five different areas, I believe, uh, for this first year, and also four different areas that are all different blocks, kind of consecutive to actually look at for a next year's project or in the future, uh, whenever the council would allocate more funding. But basically, we'll, there's kind of five big categories that we're looking at. Structural integrity or the material of the water main itself. The age of the water mains was part of this. Water quality issues was part of it. Water main size was another factor. Um, and then what other maintenance or, which areas are those other miscellaneous factors that play into that? So basically, we have identified the area between West Street, Alexander down to Waring over to Lakewood as one of the main areas that has had some of those main issues of those identified categories that I talked to, talked about, excuse me, and then also second, uh, the other part will be along Richmond, um, between Walmart down to Center Street or the old Shell Station, as I would refer to as the other piece. That's what we're identifying for this first F Y twenty-six project. That was the, basically, the million and a half target that we're trying to hit, uh, for funding and then replace about fifty-five hundred feet is what that's looking like.
Everything in yellow, which is.
Correct. Correct.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
When I got back from my trip, I noticed some flags out in my yard. Well, then a couple of days later, there was another gentleman down there putting more flags in my yard. And I went out and I asked him what the flags were for. And he said that he had a work order that a water main was going to be replaced up on Meg Street and Southwest. So he pulled it up on his phone and showed it to me. So are you looking at that water main too?
Not yet. Basically, we did, we did, I don't know if this is the same work, or this might know something else. We did put in a locate request to look at the street stuff from West Street. This isn't that title, by the way, but from, sorry, West Street, pass your house to the cornfield, if you will.
Right.
So that, there was, there was locate request for that.
Okay.
So.
Because, and the reason of these, you know, locates, how they're put in is determine how the person takes them as far as what it says in the actual locate, but we have to get these located so we can see what we're going to be doing in the future, right? I mean, without doing that, we won't know how far they are, where they're located, how far in the easement, if you have to tear up concrete, so you'll be seeing a lot of this as we're doing this project.
Right. So how long do I need to leave those flags in my yard?
You do probably, we're done with them. We locate, we've already collected the information.
Eight one one regulation states that the locate has to be done within two days.
Okay.
So two, uh, two business days. Then the work has to be, uh, completed. This was to find the mains. There was nothing in there. We did not say replace water mains. So whatever they put in there locate, we have no control of it. That was never set.
Okay.
It was to locate the main.
Okay.
Okay? Um, so if, um, as far as this one, you can pull those flags.
Alright.
Yep. Thanks for leaving them off. Uh, so, yeah, then, of course, the other stuff on that map was orange. That's basically, I think, a Third Street, Spruce Street behind Casey's and Hudson Transportation, that kind of areas, the other part, but again, has issues with those five categories of, uh, that was more material based up there where it's not a good long-term material that has had issues, um, especially on Third Street, so that's another one that we'll look at for next year. And then, of course, some of these boundaries will change as we would look at getting into like a detailed design and quantities and say, what's the cost looking like? It's like, you know, if, if we're running under budget, we will add to that to probably use the expended, expended the funds with your guys' permission, of course, or if we're showing that we're over budget, we'll have to trim something back that makes logical sense, and that we can still work on it in the future too, so.
But at this time, we're looking at probably five water main replacements.
Correct. Yep. Uh, we'll work on the packages. We have, I've given some thought that we issue this in one big package where it's a million and a half dollar contract for one contractor to work on for, say, six months, you know, that type of timeframe, whereas it, five small ones, and you have five different contractors, and then they're all in here for a month, but then, you know, there's a lot more coordination and stuff like that that has to occur, so we'll have to, we'll check the market and see what the contractor availability is too, but it's something that we will get done very soon, so that way, maybe over the winter, maybe, but some late winter, they get kind of a jump on it and that may spread, and they'd already be going on it, so that way they have a little summer to continue and actually get this done by next September for the fiscal year.
And I have it in the mayor's report, I don't want to talk about it because we're already talking about that, but we had applied for a grant, a federal government grant through Congressman Bacon's office, and we did receive a preliminary word that we were going to get around seven hundred and fifty thousand over one point two million that we requested. However, that was then right before the government shutdown, so we don't have the official word, but it is very possible that we're also going to get awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand to go towards this.
Any question beyond the water main replacement stuff, then? Other, just listening to this update, so we're still working with Valley Lakes Christmas Park project that's relying, uh, they're still rectifying a couple of sites on the sewer line itself, uh, but they have gotten out of the way so that, um, to the owner and the first, I guess it's the owner of each lot, if I, if the master developer in the owner of that corner lot could get their buildings done and the parking lot done and stuff like that, so they have one more thing to do there. Uh, and then also, then we're working on planning commission items for next week. I think we have two, if I remember right, right? Yep. Three? Two, two, okay. Almost carried over, three, I think, excuse me, so. Worked on that, and then F Y twenty-six is, to your question about the flags, we've been collecting some information, very, very common information on the three different projects we've put into the budget to find out if, if we're trying to narrow those scope sentences, and we can work with Lori to find out where the appropriate funds are, if the, how it works out, so. That's what we're working on here too, for the next last month and also the following month, so. Any other questions for me?
Any questions? City engineer?
Spent a great deal of time on what was pulled from the agenda last month. Uh, we were, uh, scrambling around, trying to get everything ready for Champion Shores, and, uh, they decided, uh, that the way they wanted to do the development, uh, and we advised them they needed to go back through planning and, and council again, so they pulled it, so they're still very serious they want to go forward, but, uh, um, they need to go back through planning and council. There'll be a planning in November, we're back, so. That's what's going on there. Uh, the other thing I've been working on, maybe Andrea's got a few other things, as you'll recall, we were the co-applicant with Elcorn Athletic Association for the L B ninety-seven funds, which is a sales tax turnback. That was a part of the financing mechanism for the, uh, S I D on the southern side, excuse me, northern side of, of the project, and then in the middle is Elcorn Athletic, and the part that's in the city that's got some TIF is the commercial project, okay? So it's kind of a complicated thing with a number of things going on and some contribution agreements between the parties, but we passed a resolution to be a co-applicant for the L B ninety-seven funds, which is required under the statute. One of the first things that has to happen is there's a pro forma hearing of, with the government, uh, the governor and, uh, and several other officials, about five people that, uh, they have to give the project the go-ahead, and then we go ahead, and ultimately, we have an election, okay, to do this. It comes before the voters. So that's the first step. There's a hearing down in Lincoln. It's not a legislative committee hearing, it's a special committee just for these funds. Uh, had a meeting about it with all the involved parties this morning, next week, uh, and either send it your eye, we'll go over the hearing, and, uh, so we'll get some more done then. Andrea, any other? Okay? Any questions?
Yes, Jeff. Um, mayor's report, we have a couple other grants that we got awarded, which is exciting as well. Uh, one of them is a safety grant from L R for five hundred dollars to put, um, security cameras up at City Hall. Um, you might have also noticed that we put a window tinting as well, just to increase our safety a little bit at City Hall. And we also got a, the pre-award for the Public Water System Security Grant. We applied for seventeen thousand, the grant is up to ten thousand, but we don't have a certain amount yet, and that will be four camera systems out at the water treatment as well. Um, we are still working on getting the condensation part replaced at the water tower. We have the documents through the bonding company because of the company going out of business that we need to sign, and then the work will be done by the lawyer. Uh, we already talked about the federal funding request. Uh, Lori has started audit work. We have a lot of pre-work already done, a lot of documents have already been submitted, and then, as Mike mentioned too, we are still working with Port Main on the antenna. We do have the, uh, some of the infrastructure. Any questions for you? Okay. Um, upcoming, and I'm planning commission, break motion next Thursday or next Tuesday, sorry, the first at four thirty. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Vote please.